Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November the eighth. Time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
Chairman Beck, there are changes to the open business meeting agenda and the daily agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to remove Agenda Item 4-2, reappointments of the Plant and Zoning Commission, and then also the 5:30 westernado affair advisory board meeting has been canceled.
Okay.
You'll have to make the second.
Yes.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Before we proceed, we'll need to get everybody's, introduce everyone for the record here. Start over here.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Sandra Havens, Corps Administrator.
Deborah Phillips, A.D. County Operations.
Don Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Jennifer Hawley, Clerk's Office.
Rebecca Plotter, Deputy Chiropractor Administrator.
Connie Oberbilly, Recorder's Office.
Heather Luther, Reporter's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
And we have IT guy, we have two other.
Melissa Parpar, TCA.
Grace Taylor, TCA.
Okay.
Beth Ma, Treasurer.
Bob Perkins, A.D. County Procurement.
Bob McQuaid, Assessor.
Well, good enough. And all three Commissioners are present. Now we can proceed, and we've removed one item from the, from the agenda. First up is the reappointment of Nicole Kimmel to the Joint Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, term to expire eight twenty-five. Is there any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the reappointment of Nicolette Kimmel to the Joint Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, term to expire eight twenty-five of 2026.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. We'll need to take a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second that.
Yeah. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. 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 Okay. Mr. Bob.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning, it's the final ranking and a request to enter fee negotiations for RFQ 23003, the ARPA Regional Well Study. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of the two statement of qualifications, and would like to submit a letter of their recommendation for your consideration.
Okay. Could you read the letter?
I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated November eighth, 2022, to the Board of A.D. County Commissioners from A.D. County Procurement regarding RFQ 23003. Dear members of the Board, the Evaluation Committee has evaluated the responses for RFQ 23003. A shortlist of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The shortlist of qualified firms ranked in order of evaluation scoring is as follows. Number one, HDR, score of ninety-two point two five. Number two, Mountain Water Works with a score of eighty-three point seven five. The Evaluation Committee would like to request the Board's approval of the final rankings and permission to enter into fee negotiations, beginning with the number one ranked firm. If negotiations are successful, the Development Services Department will put back on the Board's agenda for contract award consideration.
Okay. All right, thank you. You're welcome. All right, do we have motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the final rankings for RFQ 23003, ARPA Regional Well Study, and authorize staff to enter into fee negotiations with HDR with a score of ninety-two point two five.
Second that.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on to new business. We have several resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution number 2813, Resolution Adjusting the A.D. County Budget to Reflect the Receipt of Unscheduled Revenue to the A.D. County Sheriff's Office. Is there discussion on it? Apparently not. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2813. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number 2813, as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution number 2814, ARPA Resolution Number 22, Resolution for Approval of Allowable Expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget for Extension of the Sheriff's Office Temporary Nursing Contract and Expo Idaho Horse Bar Removal.
I just thought I'd see those in the same sentence.
Yeah, well, there's a linky there.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don. Is there, is there a discussion?
Ready to go on that.
No, we're very excited to get going on the X one.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And how long does the, does the, is the nursing thing? When does it end up, close out?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We are extending it. The contract is through September, just to hit the fiscal year, but ideally March, thirty-first of 2023.
Okay.
To kind of help them get their hirings in place.
There, there is no increase in money. We're just spending out what we had already given them.
Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2814. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2814, as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the Resolution, the public hearing on Resolution 2815, a resolution for sole source purchase of emergency vehicles for the A.D. County Sheriff's Office for FY '23. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just comment that this is a resolution for vehicles for the Sheriff's Office, and I think everybody's well aware that the challenges that we've been having trying to even find vehicles, let alone fifteen police pursuit vehicles in the marketplace, so this is a resolution to procure those vehicles.
Did we find those in Parkmont lot down in Burley?
Pretty much.
We did. They did. That's true. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll close the, the public hearing on Resolution 2815. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2815, as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2816, a resolution for procurement of a modular building on the open market. Is there discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you may recall, we went out for a bid for this project for the juvenile services modular building. We received one response. That response was over budget, so it was determined probably our best course of action would try to go out on the open market and try to procure this building.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2816. Is, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve Resolution number 2816, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, we now have a proclamation designating November nineteenth as National Adoption Day. Okay, is there discussion on this proclamation? I'm glad we're doing it. I think adoption is a very important function of our society, and we're, we're happy we can do that. Did you want to say anything about it?
If I may.
Yes, you may.
Commissioner, good morning, everyone. We are very, very happy with your ongoing support. I think this is, was my third time that we've done it together, second time with the current board. And it's something so happy for us. It's, it's a, it's a project that is getting bigger, and it's getting a lot more support from, from the courts, from the county, different departments as well. This year, Grace Taylor is organizing the event. We are very happy with what she's been able to accomplish. A lot of donations from the community, donations from county and state employees as well for, for them. I believe we have twenty-eight. Twenty-nine children, which will be adopted. We're going to celebrate it on November tenth, just because the holidays, the way that they felt it here. So we're doing it a little bit earlier. But if you are around, please go by on the fourth floor. We'll start at eight-thirty. We'll get some pictures. You should see the baskets. They're huge. They're really, really nice and very soft, too. It's really fun. It's something that's very special to me, having my daughter went through, we went through the adoption process, and so it's really personal to us. We're very, very happy to have your support.
It is by far the best day at the courthouse. By far away.
Yes, yes. This is, this is a, it's good for society. It's good for the families involved. It's excellent for the families involved, and, and the children particularly. And we're happy to do, to, to support this proclamation. Is there any other discussion on this proclamation? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
Want to read it into the record?
Yeah, I'll read it into the record.
Sure.
The, the Board of A.D. County Commissioners, proclamation to designate November nineteenth, 2022, as National Adoption Day, whereas A.D. County believes that all children need love, support, security, and deserve a place to call home. And whereas National Adoption Day serves to increase awareness of the ever-growing need for loving adoptive families for the children countywide who are waiting in foster care. And whereas National Adoption Day helps the dreams of children come true by working with courts, judges, attorneys, and advocates to finalize adoptions to, into permanent loving families and to celebrate adoption. Whereas our goal in A.D. County is to find hopeful parents and families wanting children for all children waiting in foster care. And whereas A.D. County is honored to join the Idaho Supreme Court, Fourth Judicial District Court, and advocacy groups in promoting National Adoption Day in A.D. County, Idaho. Now, therefore, we, the Board of A.D. County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby proclaim November nineteenth, 2022, as National Adoption Day, to honor all individuals who give their time and effort to provide children with a permanent adoptive home, and do commend this observation to all of our citizens. A.D. County and the Fourth Judicial District Court will be celebrating National Adoption Day in, in A.D. County, Idaho, on November tenth, 2022, and witness whereon on this eighth day of November, 2022. Signed, all three Commissioners. Okay? I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd love to make the motion. I move to approve the proclamation, as listed on the agenda, and designate November nineteenth, 2022, as National Adoption Day. I would like to note, we are celebrating ours on November tenth.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
Sure. Get a picture.
You want to get the basket? No. No.
All right. Come on up here.
Okay, let's all squish together.
All right.
Beth.
So I can't fit everybody in the picture unless you're about like where Ken is.
All right, we got to get switched together. You need a front row.
Yeah, we need a front row.
You need a front row. Come on, Beth.
Beth has like, what, three more baskets.
Let's see. How about, I'm standing right here. I'm trying to raise off. You'll stand right there. So it's going to be a full body shot, so here we go. Oh, we got it. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Grace.
Run a copy.
Okay, where did you take it?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a happy one.
Yes.
Happy day, happy day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on. We have, next up, we have licenses. We have a couple of catering permits, new licenses, and license transfers. Is there questions or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including two catering permits, four new licenses, and four license transfers, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have Clerk's Office, and we have Heather representing the entire Clerk's Office.
Good morning. In case you didn't know, there is an election today. So everyone else is a little preoccupied. I hope crazy thing.
Commissioner back.
Didn't know that.
Did you forget to run?
I've been running a long time.
So everyone is working diligently down at the elections office. We highly encourage anyone who has not yet done so to get out and vote. And we're excited to see the results later tonight. I will be down there later this evening, helping to make sure that everything gets unloaded and ballots get counted.
It's a twelve-hour marathon, right? At least.
Or longer.
Yeah.
Depending on the day.
For the voters, at least.
This is the voting.
Probably twenty hours for you guys.
Clerk's Office is a little longer than that. Get it all out. Thank you. Anything else?
That is all that I have on the list so far. That's been taking up everyone's time and efforts right now.
Oh, well, better call us all. Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is the Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated November fourth, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Personnel Actions. I'll accept the motion on the Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions, as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' Office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have with us today our distinguished assessor. Mr. Bob McQuaid, do you have anything good for us to discuss?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Particularly good. We have two hearings left at Board of Tax Appeals.
Well, that's good.
And they've not been scheduled yet, but then that will be behind us. We have some tax cancellations coming up, thirty-three, which is not good news for the Treasurer. But I looked to see how many tax dollars were taken off the roll last year because of this. Over one point seven million dollars was taken off.
Interesting to see how the court case goes.
Yeah. Yes, Association of Counties just submitted a brief, an amicus brief with the court. So I, I think they're going to, I really do feel that the court is going to find in favor of the, of the counties and against the Tax Commission.
Will you share this number with Seth?
Sure.
Did I say, okay?
Oh, we have to, yeah. Got to go get my call this morning.
Is this, that number one point seven million, does that include the, the, what that would have been with the, with the prorations?
Mr. Chairman, it probably would have been, I, I don't know if the number would have been equivalent because.
Because that number is for the whole year, correct?
Is for the whole year. Yeah, proration, it would be, the number would go down.
Well, yeah.
Quite a bit, yes.
And that's actually what the legislature intended was proration, you're right. Yeah. That's what the law says.
This is just so interesting, because I remember talking to legislators who say this was to have been prorated. Other ones say, it was my understanding it was not going to be prorated. So these arguments where it is not ambiguous at all, and how the, why can't the courts say that? When two people were thinking different things. Anyway, they'll sort it out in the courts.
And it's, and it's not really important what people actually think when they were voting. What's matter is what the actual language of the law says.
Yeah.
That's what matters. I'm a textualist.
Maybe they'll do something in the session.
Well, maybe they will.
Because the courts will take so long.
I know the assessors have put together a bill to, and IEC, we, Phil told me just last week that IEC is one of our top five bills that they're going to be pursuing to just get this thing nailed down.
Great.
Yeah.
Great.
Thanks, Bob.
Well, thank you, Bob.
My pleasure, that's everything.
I'll accept the motion on the tax cancellations, which are not really cancellations, but rather adjustments.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the thirty-three tax cancellations for 2022, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And we have the honor of having our distinguished Treasurer. Beth Ma.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We are in the final stages of preparing the tax bills, or starting to prepare the tax bills. So just yesterday. It's, it's a great day. It's actually about seven to ten days.
Such a great gift.
Yes. Yep.
Just by, just time for Thanksgiving.
Yes, we have to have them mailed by the fourth Monday of November. So the good news is, is that yesterday we did receive the signed PTR abstract from the state. So that's the circuit breakers. So that's all been finalized. We will work feverishly today to get these final tax cancellations through, so that hopefully those are reflected on the tax bills. And then we are actually freezing our systems tonight, and we'll be just working on tax bills for the next week.
Well, good for you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something to this. Commissioner Kenny had a comment just before Christmas. Several years ago, I, and some others with IEC, we looked at exploring, changing that date from December twentieth, because we just think that's a horrible, horrible Christmas gift.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
Couldn't make it May first.
Well, yeah. We looked at all of the different statutes that have touch points with that December date. And it looked like something right out of the movie, A Brilliant Mind. Yeah, was that the name of it? It was Russell Crowe.
Yeah.
It, it just looked like that, all these strings all over the place. And at that point, we just thought there would be no way to change this. It affects so many other statutes. It's just, would be best that we left it alone.
Well, quite frankly, most people pay their property taxes through their mortgage.
Yeah, what percentage?
A lot of.
I don't know.
It's a big percent.
Maybe sixty percent? I don't know exactly.
It's a big percentage, yeah. So you get one big check, or several big checks from mortgage companies. The wires, right on the deadline.
Pretty close.
It's typically the older retired people who's.
Oh, yeah.
Don't have mortgages, and they're writing a big check.
You wouldn't know. Yeah. Which part? Okay, well, well, thanks.
Yes, and then also we do have our October investment report.
Do you have an extra copy? I left mine on my desk.
I have an extra.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Yes.
I guess the biggest changes for our portfolio has been the continuing story of interest rate changes with the Fed. So on November second, they raised them. I think we had mentioned that in our last meeting. And so that was on November second. They're going to meet again in, in December. I think they'll make a rate decision December fourteenth. And so we're likely to see probably another rate hike.
Mark built that in, already has it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's discussion of another seventy-five basis points. There's point five, fifty basis points. They're really data dependent, and so they watch it. And, and as we get closer, you know, we'll see what decision they make. The good news for us and our portfolio is, we have a lot of liquidity in our portfolio. So if you look at our L-GIP, we have, at the October thirty-first, we had a, over a hundred forty-five million there. And so L-GIP is, is impacted pretty greatly with the interest rate changes, because it has so much in short term. And so we're seeing an uptick there. One thing to note about the L-GIP and the DVF, the top two lines on our summary page on the very top, is the point, or two point zero nine nine is a month lag. So this morning, before coming up here, I went to see if we had our new statements from the State Treasurer's Office. And typically, they're available on the fifth business day of the month, which we're now on the sixth business day of the month, and they weren't there yet. I, I kind of wanted to see what the, the new yield was. And it undoubtedly has gone up, but there's always a lag when we do this report, because we try to do it in the first meeting in the new month. So that's really helping us out a lot. If you went to the, the next page over, it shows our, I believe it's the next page on, on yours. It's the blue one.
Yeah.
We'll likely see a continued uptick on L-GIP there. We had two hundred and ninety, almost two hundred ninety-one thousand interest from our L-GIP. So beyond that, the next page in, we had two purchases in the month of October. They were both mortgage-backed securities. And if you look at the yield to maturity on those, we're up above five on the top one. We, we purchased about one point three million. And I recall in our discussion with RVK, which is our investment, not, not RVK, sorry, Clearwater Advisors, our investment manager, we talked about this purchase. Beth approved it. This was a fairly seasoned mortgage-backed security. Most of these were originated loans in two thousand five through two thousand eight. And so although you see the maturity date out at twenty thirty-eight, this one will likely mature and settle it all out over the next couple of years. So it'll have a quicker payout. And we appreciate advisors doing that sort of work for us on these mortgage-backed securities, because they're, you know, fairly complicated investment instruments. But they've been doing a good job so far. Our potential calls, we're unlikely to see any calls, because with interest rates going up, we're not going to see calls. We could potentially get calls down the road if rates drop again. But really, there's no fear of that happening anytime in the near future. Going on to our maturities, we've got about fifty million over the next five years coming due. And so that's being laddered back into new investments. And, and the good news on that is, with the rising rates, we're able to ladder that in with higher yields. Other than that, those are the big changes to our portfolio, mostly interest rate affecting it, which affects our, our market values on our existing bonds. We're not really concerned about that, because we're not trading these. We just hold them to maturities. And the good news is our, our cash accounts are yielding more.
Mr. Chair.
Good, yes.
Tim, are we putting our ARPA funds in L-GIP or a separate account?
It's a, it's a completely separate account.[1793.81] It's a it's a completely separate account. When we uh got that money, we segregated on purpose so that we could completely keep it away from any Ada County investment fund. So this it's got its own.
Interest-bearing account?
It is.
Probably not much, but.
Well, it it uh has the same yield, I believe the exact same yield as uh L G I P.
But the interest needs to be used for the stated purpose of the
That's right. Any interest payments, uh, just go right back into the account and build build that account.
Okay.
And then what about the solid waste and the landfill? Cause we're looking at almost forty forty million there. Is that?
Take a look at that one.
In the operation funds.
Yeah, there's, what page is that on yours?
That's one of three on the not the operation funds. Yeah, so we've got forty million there. I just wanna make sure that we're.
Yeah, so this this is one of what what the clerk's office calls the um participant accounts. So uh, the funds that are in the investments, uh, a participant account owns those funds, a certain portion of it. So they get their prorata um share of the returns of of the monthly, uh, when we do interest allocation, it's allocated prorated to them and then it builds up uh their cash value. So it continues to build. Um, and and just to point out, in the past, we've talked about the how we balance to the auditors. I had taken it out for one month, but after discussion with uh Treasurer Mon, we thought we'll put it in there, but we'll put it in the back. Rather than focus in on any month-to-month carryover discrepancies, uh, we don't wanna put too much emphasis on that because both the Treasurer's Office and the Controller's Office are monitoring that daily. And we just had one out of balance item. And I believe it's been cleared up by now. It's just a payroll item. So it was out of our our bank account, but it hadn't been entered in FAB yet. So you see a difference there. So we just list that on the very back page. That's what that is.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions?
It looks like Expo's healthy again. Remember when we were down under a million during COVID? Got down to nine hundred thousand. Now it's up to seven million, so they're doing well. Yeah.
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
That's it, Mister Chairman.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes. Okay, we have uh approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have some uh Expo Idaho. They have some interim events. Uh, is there any discussion or any uh uh question on any of the interim events?
I wanna know what Girl's Day Out is. Bob, where's Bob? Sounds like fun.
Are you going to it?
I don't know. Find out what it is.
Yeah. All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mister Chairman, I move to approve the ten interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have Parks and Water Rays. They we have a number of weddings, a number of other events, Parks and Water Rays. Um, is there any discussion or any questions before we accept the motion? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mister Chairman, to approve the nine Barbara Park education investment agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have uh agreements. We have one ratification of an agreement and we have uh seventeen new agreements. Is there any question or discussion on any of the agreements?
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I would request that we pull number four for separate discussion. It's agreement number one five zero three two.
Okay. Is there agreement on that?
It's been circulating for six weeks, month and a half. So I think there was plenty of time for discussion. More than plenty of time for discussion. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve all.
Well, I'm gonna discuss it regardless.
Well, that's fine. You can discuss it.
Okay.
Well, Mister Chairman, I would, I'm gonna move to table agreement number one five zero three two.
Okay, uh, I don't hear a second, so.
Well, if I could speak to my motion. Uh, this is an agreement for professional services between Ada County and Westerburg and Associates to provide lobbying services. So this is the county hiring a lobbyist um for the amount of eighty thousand dollars. I think uh this is something that uh reflects the desire of the current board. And we are obviously having an election today and a new board will be sworn in in January. Therefore, because this represents the priorities of the current board, I think it's appropriate that this should be tabled um for the new board uh to consider it. Because this is a, you know, year-long, I don't, year-long contract uh regarding legislative priorities of the board. And if we're gonna have a new board in January, I think this needs to be brought up with that board.
Any other further discussion? I might point out that this agreement can be canceled at any time with but by by the by this board or another board.
So Mister Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to.
Well, my motion is still on the floor.
No, it doesn't have a second. So.
Okay, so I move to ready for a new motion?
Okay.
All right, I move to waive the three quote policy for agreement number one five zero three zero. Ratify agreement number one five zero one two. Approve the remaining seventeen agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay, is there a second?
I will not be seconding it.
I'll second the motion.
I'd like discussion though.
Okay, have discussion. Here we go.
Well, I'm I'm gonna have to vote no on this whole package because I'm opposed to this one agreement. So I don't like being put in that position, but um I think this is a uh not a proper uh contract for the commission. I believe we already have a lobbyist through the Idaho Association County. I think this is um not something that's uh in the taxpayer's best interest. And I don't even recall seeing a itemization of hours that you normally get from a lawyer. Um, the reports we got from our lobbyists were fairly generic. And frankly, I just don't think it's um uh, I don't think we got the value for what we paid for the contract and I, so therefore I'm gonna vote no on this whole package.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, uh, we'll click, call, roll.
Commissioner Kenyon?
Aye.
Commissioner Davidson?
Nay.
Commissioner Beck?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, indigent uh services. We have the weekly indigent items on fourteen. Do we have a uh any discussion or a motion on this?
Yes, Mister Chairman, uh, I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated November eighth twenty twenty-two and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, with that, we'll be in recess. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November the eighth. Uh, the Board is in session, uh, sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District and all three Commissioners are present. You can also identify yourself.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Okay. And IT guy. Okay, we're all here. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, um, you will uh next take up the Claims Journal. New business under Claims Journal. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated November fourth, twenty twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to this?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, you've heard a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is Personnel Actions.
Yes, Mister Chairman, um, I move to approve the Personnel Action Items as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, you've uh heard a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have an EMS update.
Yes, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Um, pretty quick update today. We uh had Alex LeBeau out and uh, he did a ride along yesterday with Mark Babson.
Did he?
Thought it was uh really informative and got a lot out of it. So we'll continue to do that. You know, we're trying to to get uh um, some legislators to come out as we work through this EMS sustainability task force to come out and ride along. After today, we'll have a better idea of who to actually invite since uh, you know, they expect a pretty big change over down in the state outs this year. So, but we won't know until tomorrow, at least tomorrow. Um, so uh outside of that COVID, you know, we're watching, there are are a couple of new variants in the wastewater data. Um, it's uh Omicron B A five point two point one and now a need my uh glasses. C C two point one point one. So two new variants. Um, these newer variants uh from what I've read, aren't covered by the even the boosters as well as is what we saw earlier in the pandemic. So we'll just keep a close eye on things. We do have a meeting. Dr. Hill was with the Emergency Responders Health Clinic. Is gonna be meeting with the J P A Admin Administrative Committee next Wednesday to give some recommendations on P P E. And I think that we all kind of uh stopped, well, some of some of the agencies have stopped wearing the P P E on every single call. And he has seen an uptick in number of providers that are are getting uh COVID. So I think he's gonna try to tell us to go back to being a little more safe on on calls. So uh, but that's uh, that's really all I had to report out on today.
So again, what was your 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 number of calls?
Well, I'm if I use the old data, um, I went in last week and looked at uh, that that same uh report that I've been running since the beginning of the pandemic. And with the newer variants, there are different symptomology that comes out of it. And so if I use just that and with the the same symptoms from the original COVID strains, it's still around like three and a half. It's climbed a little bit. Um, but if I add in all the symptoms with the new variants, it's thirteen. So um, it's, the reality is probably somewhere between three and thirteen a day. Uh, but it's just, it's really hard to to tell, you know? One of the difficulties, and I think I mentioned this last week, is that these home tests, people aren't reporting to the health districts if they they uh have a positive case. And so it's really difficult to nail down our positivity rate, you know, in the county. Because, you know, if you test positive with with one of those, you're probably not calling the health district. I don't think many people do, so. So we will continue to watch the wastewater data. Um, it took them a little longer to get this one out. Uh, that report was from October seventeenth, so there's almost a uh a three-week lag on that wastewater data, but uh.
So what is the October seventeenth wastewater data saying?
Uh, the trend was still pretty flat, but that's the one that had the the two new variants that we hadn't seen before. The prevalent strain is still B A four and B A five. Those two strains account for fifty-nine percent of the virus uh that they're finding in the water, followed by B A four point six at eight at nineteen percent. And then the new uh B A two or five point two point one counts for thirteen percent. And that C C two point one point one accounts for eight percent. And typically, what we see is when these new variants come in, you'll see their numbers start to climb and they become the prevalent variant. You know, if you look to at this chart, you know, they they aren't finding any more Delta variants in the water. You know, that variant has been overtaken by the Omicron strain, so um, it's gonna be with us for, it'll probably be like the flu, you know, where we just have to deal with it.
Are there, is there a subset of symptoms that go along with this latest one?
The latest one's a a lot more headache, um, pretty severe headache. Um, we do still see some respiratory fever. Um, it and it's sort of dependent on if somebody had a previous um strain of of Omicron. Uh, sometimes you'll see the fever doesn't spike as high. Um, but what they are seeing with these new variants is certainly the B Q one point one, which they didn't find any of that in the water this last report. And it accounted for eleven percent the week before. Um, that variant, and I I believe the the C C two point one point one, if you had, you know, the Omicron B A four or five, you can now get it again. So people that that caught COVID a month ago can catch it again because these new strains have a different mutation on the spike protein that don't allow for the natural immunity to do as much as it normally would. So just more of the same with COVID.
Okay.
You sound like a broken record.
Not your fault.
That's not your fault. Anyway, it uh it doesn't seem as though we're having spikes and infections, hospitalizations.
The hospitalizations are still down. You know, the hospitals, uh, last week, Saint Alice was boarding, I believe it was fifteen patients for lack of of room to put them in, which is you typically more of a lack of staff for the room up there. So, uh, but they are still testing everybody that comes in the hospital. And their positivity rate, I asked uh Cameo last week and I I didn't hear what the number was from her, but uh um, they still are testing everybody and they're catching quite a few people that were positive that came in to have their hip worked on or whatever, so.
Okay.
Have you transferred any children with this virus?
With R S V? Uh, we we haven't seen the big uptick in other other areas of the country have seen, but it it's like the flu. I'm I suspect it'll be here before we know it. And that's the scary thing is, you know, if you lump R S V on top of the flu, on top of COVID, that's where you could get into to trouble again. So we we did uh get most of our staff vaccinated for the flu um in the last couple of weeks, so. And we're using a quadrivalent vaccine this year that covers four different strains. It was a I don't know if you've seen the reports out of Australia who who uh just came out of their winter. They they had uh the worst flu season they've seen in ten years, you know, in Australia. And typically, what they see in Australia will see in the northern hemisphere um during our winter. So they're saying it's gonna be a bad flu year, so get your flu shot.
Who knows? Could be. All right, anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you at ten.
Yep.
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 I'll be back.
All right, we're in recess.